Go ahead and begin with Paul Rowe. Your answer is?
Here.
So, Mickey McCaffrey. Darryl Wood. Rob Kim. Corey Abrams. And Angela McRae. All right, I'm gonna go over really quickly some ground rules for tonight, everybody. First of all, let me say thank you for being here. We appreciate you coming out and being willing to take part in the city government. This is important. So, what we're gonna do is, I think everybody has been signed up number, we have a total of nineteen people who's... Sorry. We have a total of nineteen people who have signed up. I don't know, is it? How's that? Can it right here? Is it this one?
I think it's just too far. Reception.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, I'll turn this one off in just a second. All right, can everybody? I tell you what. If I just turn this off, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, real quickly, a couple of ground rules. We have a total of nineteen people signed up to speak tonight, okay? What we're gonna do, we're gonna have five minutes per speaker, okay? If a speaker doesn't use their entire time, we'll move on. Try to speed things along a little bit, because it's gonna take a little bit of time. I will ask that everybody keep their comments polite, of course. I will also ask that you keep your comments relevant to discussion of the future of the police department. We've already discussed our personnel issues, and that has been dealt with. Now, we're working on how we move forward with the police department. So, I would appreciate it if that, if we keep the comments relevant to that, okay? In the interest of its speakers, if a speaker has questions, we're gonna jot those questions down, and we're not gonna reply immediately, okay? I'm gonna keep a note of all those questions, and then at the end of, once all the speakers have spoken, I will do my best, the council will do their best, to answer those questions, okay? That'll help us keep this moving along, and not keep everybody here out of mind, okay? Sound good? Thank y'all. All right, Mr. Roy, will you go ahead and call the first speaker?
It's gonna be number one, Rick Prouder.
You got a timer, Jordan?
I did.
Starting my time now?
Starting your time.
All right, the time has started. Praise God. I would like to thank the mayor and council for taking the time to listen to the citizens of our community before making decisions that could truly mean the difference between life and death. I would like to thank each and every person that's here tonight to let their voices be heard. Whether you agree with me or not, that is fine, just as long as we're here, 'cause we live in a country where our opinions should matter, and it should make a difference. I've been a part of this community for thirty-plus years. This is my home. My wife and I have raised three smart, beautiful children here. This is home. When I die, I will be buried in this town. This is home. Home is not only where the heart is, home is a place of refuge. Home is a place of safety. We will lose a portion of that safety if we outsource our law enforcement. At the close of Friday night's council meeting, I was getting in my truck when I noticed the Harpersville Police Department pulling up. Thinking it was Officer Roper, I tapped on the window. When he rolled the window down, I realized it wasn't Roper, and it kinda caught me off guard, 'cause I thought Roper had stopped by just to see what was going on with the council meeting. He's been part of our community for many years. So, I jokingly said, "Hey, you're a little late." The officer told me, he got there as quick as he could, that Shelby County was called, but they were too far out to respond. Again, I say, "Too far out to respond." I minister at the jail on Friday nights. It's where I spent every Friday night for the last sixteen years of my life. It takes me a minimum of twenty-five minutes to make the drive. It will take the same amount of time coming from Shelby County to here. I'm friends with several of the deputies, and have love and respect for them all. But there's only so much you can do. The county has already sent school resource officers, and for that, we are grateful. And I gave God praise for that, because that was my biggest fear, was that our schools were not gonna be protected. Who would think something's gonna happen at a school in Little Vincent, Alabama? Or who would think that something was gonna happen at the little school in Texas? What about the times when the deputy's off? What about the times when we have to get the deputy that is covering Wilsonville to come and respond? In that case, now response time's cut in half, but the folks in Wilsonville will not have any coverage. In our town, you can get from one point to another in about five minutes, any one point to another in about five minutes. We're, are we really ready to give up twenty minutes in response time? How much carnage can take place in twenty minutes? The city council has had an eye at doing away with the police force for at least six years. And it seems as though this unbelievable happenings, and this sickening things that have happened in this community, is gonna be the catalyst to make that happen. I say, please, do not take our local law enforcement away from us. I have an elderly mother-in-law, whom I love dearly, that would have a difficult time keeping an intruder at bay for five minutes, much less twenty-five minutes. The officers involved have been put on leave, and they will not be coming back to patrol the streets of Vincent, regardless of the outcome of this meeting. Let us build a new police force. We have men and women of high character, of high moral standings in this community and around this town, that can fill an interim position as chief until a new chief can be appointed and a new police force built. Once again, I say, "Too far out to respond." May God bless each of you.
Next one's number two, Deb Cleveland. Go on. Number three, Carol Cleveland. Carol, am I saying it right, Carol?
Carol.
Carol.
Cleveland.
Yeah. You know, I wish I'd had that stiff drink before I came up here. I haven't spoken in front of a crowd for about twelve years, so excuse my nervousness. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for letting me speak and express my feelings, my thoughts. One of the problems, I think this concerns, is the lack of information. I've read several news articles, even a national news article about the problem in Vincent. And it seems to be framed as a highly emotional racial issue. Now, I don't know. It doesn't seem to have been any investigation, any facts put out for us to, for the community to judge. I feel like the council should've held a public meeting before they dissolved the police department to, with this large of an issue, to find out how the community feels first, because this is not just a normal situation. I've heard talk of using the sheriff's department. And again, to echo the previous speaker, I'm worried about the response time. Now, I've called officers out to the house before, and it only took like five minutes for them to get there, for Vincent to get there. So, that's good. But what type of an issue are we gonna have in an emergency situation if we use sheriff And if the situation is a racial issue, I don't see how getting rid of the racial police department, and we don't know, maybe the sheriff's department is prejudiced too. We don't know that. We're just, you know, you're exchanging the devil you know for the devil you don't. So, and I would like to hear from some of the people here that feel like that they're threatened because of a racial issue. I want them to explain it to me. You know, I'm sixty-eight years old. I grew up in Dallas, Texas. Now, back in the sixties and seventies, yeah, there were racial problems. I was involved in them. I marched for civil rights, if that means anything. But I don't see that type of activity anymore. I see a lot of news articles that try to drum up emotions when they don't exist. And I think they're being used to divide us. I see blacks and whites get along just fine. Now, maybe I'm wrong. But to tell you the truth, I don't care if we had three black officers, and they were racist. What I care about is, are they gonna treat me equally and fairly? Regardless of what their feelings are, what's important is their actions. So, and I think most people would agree with that. You can't tell somebody's racist just by what they say. Different words mean different things to different cultures. And you can't, even if you grew up in a racist society, it becomes... It becomes your fault.
Number four, it's gonna be John McCutcheon.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity for the community to speak before the council and you, Michigan Mayor. My name is John McCutcheon. I live on County Road 60. My wife and I have lived out here for seventeen years. I moved to Alabama in 1971 from the state of Vermont. I had a business that I went into, one of the automatic car washes. I was renovating a house for my uncle, so my wife and I could move into it. I heard some commotion outside. I was living on South Side in Birmingham. I went outside and found a man had been shot three times. He was on the sidewalk, dying. I comforted him as he passed from this world to the next, before the police and the ambulance got there. I opened that car wash in 1972. On Fourth of July, 1973, while I was operating the car wash, during the holiday day, I had a fourteen-year-old boy working with me, helping me to mop the cars as we ran him through. Three black armed assailants robbed us, pistol-whipped us, and stripped us to our underwear. They beat us until they were tired. I ran to the neighbors after they left, a matter of two minutes, in my underwear, called the county sheriff's department, Jefferson County. They came there, and shortly thereafter, we went to the hospital, both the young man and myself. He was pistol-whipped as well as I was, where they sewed our heads up. The deputy sheriff that investigated, later spoke in court, took eighteen months to go to court. The assailant that we identified in a lineup in Admetville had been out of state, in the state of Pennsylvania, working. He was out on bail when he robbed me for armed robbery. He was found innocent by a white jury, as a matter of fact, because of testimony that between the young man and myself was conflicting about the apparel that they were wearing. So, he got out because of the confusion. I lived in Homewood. I came home one night from work and found my French doors were busted in the back of my house, where there had been attempted burglary. There had been an attempted burglary. The police investigated. Nothing was ever done about it. My insurance paid for the door. And we moved from Homewood shortly after that to Vincent. I lived within two blocks of the police and the fire department in Homewood, so we got a little tired of all that action and sirens and so forth. But we moved out here to the country like I had been raised in, in Vermont. About five years ago, one day, I was going over to, towards the dam to get some sandblasting done, and as a result, I had left my phone at home. Our barn at the house is about three hundred yards behind the house. My wife had been gone, had gone up to take care of our horses. I had drove out to, towards the dam to get the sandblasting done, and I found that I had left my phone at home. So, on the way back, I just stopped at the house, and as a matter of fact, when I pulled up, there was a car in the yard, and it was backed up to my garage door. My wife's car was not there. She was at the barn taking care of her horses. It was about ten o'clock in the morning. I pulled up in front of this car with my truck, didn't have my phone, but I noticed a man coming out from around the back of the house. He said he was looking for his four-wheeler. Somebody had stolen it, and they told him it was behind a greenhouse on County Road 60. I said, "It's not my house. This is my house, and it's not behind my house. I don't know about your four-wheeler, and I don't know about anybody saying that it might be here. It's not here." When he left, I went in the house to get my phone, and I just wondered, I wondered what he was doing behind the house, so I walked out to the side of the house, our screen porch, and the screen was cut, the lock was busted off, and I had interrupted him in a burglary. Called nine-one-one. Chief of Police was there within five minutes, and so was the county sheriff. All I'm saying is, this is not about me and my misfortune of crimes. What I'm saying is, about the two thousand people in this community need police protection. If that's not evident by what I've said tonight, I don't know what will be. You don't know when you're gonna become a victim of crime, but you will be. God help you if we don't have a police department.
Number five, now, Ernest Fear.
First of all, let me say thanks to the mayor and the council for this forum. And we are talking about keeping the police department. My thoughts about the police department, I think that this city needs a police department. I really do believe that we do need a police, we've always had a police department. We've always had a, this is a very low-key city, but now, folks, we are worldwide. I bet you ten to one that if you say, you go anywhere, and you say you're from Vincent, Alabama, we got a name for us, so. I hate to say that, but sometimes facts are facts. I don't think that disbanding the department would be a good move. Yeah, the whole set's gonna disagree with me, because we have always had a police department here in Vincent, ever since I grew up here. And I don't think that, you know, just this disbanding department because of what happened, that's not fair. That's not fair to these people. And some people probably say, "Yeah, let's disband it." Personally, I don't think we should, 'cause we always had that personal touch with our police department. I think everybody can agree with that part of it. All right, and I'm gonna get away from here in a minute. I would like to ask the mayor and the council members a question. Have there been any complaints about, say, an employee? You don't have to answer that, but has there been any?
Like I said, I'll answer.
I got you, I got you, I got you, I got you. Have there been any complaints about any of the other members on this that worked for the city? That's what we gotta look at, too. Yeah, I hope y'all putting that in the record. And also, if that employee was disciplined, this is what got me. You couldn't get rid of him because he had no disciplinary action. And I'm gonna ask the mayor, and I'm gonna get away from here. Do you plan to put anything in that employee's file, or any employee that deserved some type of letter in their file? Thank you, mayor. Thank you.
Number six is Louis Garrett. Louis Garrett. Lois, I'm sorry, Lois.
Thank you, by the way, Mr. Garrett.
Good evening. I've got a couple of questions. I think that this disbanding the police department all came as a result of the text. But I wanted to ask the mayor and city council, too, when did you find out about the text, and what did you do in response to it? And I also wanna know, we're talking about, and I'm in a favor of keeping the police department, but if we kept the police department, who's in charge of hiring and firing the policeman? Because I was in one of the meetings, and the mayor said, blunt-blank, it didn't matter what the city council member said, he said, "It's my choice." And I feel like, and it's personal, but if one of the policemen's that left is he's racist, and if you're friends, and then if you the person gonna bring in the next department policeman, how do we know we're not just gonna, you're gonna bring in some more of your buddies? I wanna keep the department, but I want more than one person, not just the mayor, in charge of hiring and firing of the policemen. And I also, I was at city council meeting Friday night, and I was in the group that was told that it was executive for everybody to get out and let you guys, which I appreciate you, have your little meeting. But if I wasn't allowed in the meeting, I went around back, and I stood out there, and I talked to the ex-chief, who's no longer working but still getting paid. I had a conversation with him, and right now, I consider him a regular citizen. Why was he and the mayor's dad allowed into the executive meeting, but the rest of us weren't? The chief is just a person now. And how do you get rid of somebody, but the city is still paying them? Vincent is too broke to just be giving away money. Let's keep our police department, but I don't want you guys, just you, in complete control of the hiring and the firing. It'll never be right. And that's it.
Number seven is Maggie Three. Maggie Three.
First, I would like to say good evening to everyone. And I would like the council for thanking us, for letting us come out here to speak. But I have one question. And my question is, did the city council vote to fire Goss, and the mayor said, "No"? Why? That's my only question.
The next one is number eight, Tana Franklin.
This is Tana Franklin. Did I have to interrupt the city council and the citizens of Vincent, Alabama? We have come here today to stress the need of how we want our city to go forward. And when we look at our city, we know that we want to have a police department that represents us. But if that is not so, we want to put in place a temporary, if anything else, until we can put the right people in place. That meaning, if the council has to be there to appoint them, we do not want it up to one person, to the mayor, to appoint that person, or the two that take on the responsibility of representing our city. I, too, moved here in 2013. I left Memphis, Tennessee, going coming back and forth to the city of Vincent. I found a place that I called home. I found a place where the citizens welcomed me. I found a place where there was heart, there was soul, and people embraced me, and at that point, they didn't see color. But at the moment that I received that text message, it said to me, it set us back sixty years. And because of that, how do I tell my grandson that the place I moved him to, to protect him, that there are people in power that don't like, or we make the statements about a pregnant woman and a buy-one-get-one-free? Anyone knows? We shed blood, sweat, and tears, and I thought we overcame that. So, it hurts. It hurts that this text message took place in June. Yes, we know it took place in June. But yet, we are in August, and we allowed this to take place. Why? How do you answer me? How do you answer not just the brown-skinned, but the caramel-skinned, or even the yellow-skinned individuals? No. It did not have, nor did it say, that there was a color that was involved in it. But the fact that I am a woman, and that you would think that I was a buy-one-get-one-free individual, how does you, how do you even think that makes me feel? We should all be outraged? At this point, we've had several meetings, and still, we're still taking notes, writing down, and coming back to a conclusion that, "I will come back, and I will find a way to tell you what that means and how I will answer it." At this point in time, the decision should've been made. We need to rebuild our community. The hurt is there. We have gone international, yes, it's in the UK, even in the UK. And that's ugly, that we allowed something like this to happen to our beautiful, and I did say beautiful, our beautiful little city that each of us love. But we all know that there's corruption. Now, we need to figure out what that corruption is, and who's a part of it. We said we would send letters to the ethnics committee. The citizens want to know, when will that letter go? We also need to know who... We also need to know who was a part of those text messages? At what point did our mayor get a copy of the text message? Now, as citizens, we don't know it all, you're right. But what we do know, that our cell phone is a legal document. And if we take it further, it's going to come out. You can delete, delete, delete. But it is a legal document, and an investigation does need to take place. And the citizens, we owe them that. And the citizens that say, "Color wasn't involved," it doesn't have to have a color. The fact that you will put a woman on an auction block and sell her and an unborn child, whether you think it's an unborn child or not, is simply wrong. It is wrong. And how dare you, and how dare you pray to the Lord above and still have malice in your heart? So please, I ask of you, please allow the city to heal and do the right thing. Give them the answers that they need. You owe it to us, it is the right thing to do, and you must do it. Let's heal. Let's find the answers. Let's tell the truth.
Number nine is Kenneth, I think it's Kenneth Deuce. Is it Duke or?
Deuce. Duke. I've been called that before.
Okay, I see the R, and I was, I was, yeah.
Kenneth, Kenneth Deuce, the president of Shepherd County NAACP. And I want to say to you, mayor and the council, that none of you were expected to ever deal with a situation like this. This was thrown in your lap. And it's very difficult to deal with stuff in the spur of the moment when you have a community that's coming together. As of now, you're doing the right thing. You're allowing the city to be led by the voices of your, of their citizens. You've brought them together, you're listening to them, the people that elected you, and you're allowing them to do that. Now, we have, right now, anybody in here that wants to join the Shepherd County NAACP is free. Free. I got to do, see, our secretary, she'll sign you up right now. That was a gift from a pastor and his wife to help the citizens to have a voice. NAACP is not about racism, it's about doing what's right. I don't care what color a person is, if they've been violated, or something that violates their human rights or their civil rights, we will come and we will stand with that person to help them do the right thing the right way. And so, I thank you for this opportunity to allow them. I appreciate your opportunity to allow me to come and speak. We've had tremendous conversations before and very respectful. And so, I applaud you, and my prayer tonight is that we do the right thing for the citizens of this city. Thank you.
Number ten, you don't want to, okay. Number eleven is, is it Erin Morris?
Actually, Erin Moss. Moss, I'm sorry. It's okay, it's okay. I appreciate the council and the mayor to allow us to come and speak. This is something I would never do, because I don't enjoy, I mean, I would never stand up here and do this. But I felt this was highly important to come and speak to you and, and just to let you know that the police department and having a police department that is city-run is extremely important to me. I am a new resident to Vincent, I moved here in 2020, I bought my first home ever, and I chose Vincent. I ride horses and I've been in this area my, most of my life. I grew up in Alabaster, so I, I knew the area, and I knew that this is where I wanted to be. And since I've moved in, I've got some of the best neighbors. And I live near the gas station, and it was lovely because the police always sat there. So I feel very safe. I live alone, and it, it brought me great comfort. I've lived in unincorporated Shelby County before, I lived in Neverness. And, I mean, you know, the Shelby County sheriffs are wonderful, but it was a big draw to me to live in a city that had its own resources. When I grew up in Alabaster, we had our own police department there, and, and so I appreciated that we had one here, and it made me very proud to see those cars drive up and down the road with our city logo on it. My only, you know, issue and question about the, using the sheriff's department versus having our own is sort of a budgetary cost. I realize that you've kind of thrown the number of ninety-five thousand per dedicated officer, that we may have maybe two dedicated officers, so that's about a hundred and ninety thousand a year, where we were spending two fifty roughly for three. But when we had three officers, I felt like, it seemed like we didn't have enough officers to do the job that we needed with three. So then my question is, if we only have two dedicated sheriffs, will we have backup from the others that are going to help? Okay? And then, you know, we will have, we're at the mercy of them dictating how much we're gonna have to pay for their services, versus having our own department where we can set the budget. But in all honesty, I, I, only reason I'm standing here is because I just felt it was very important to have my voice heard, that I would really, really implore that we keep our, our police department, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
And number twelve is Jeremy Yandlud.
Good evening to the mayor, city council, thank you for this opportunity, to everybody that's out tonight, thank you guys for coming out. Try to keep this short and simple. My opinion on having a police department for our town, I do believe that we need one for the city of Vincent. Been here all my life, graduated here. You know, to kind of echo what the lady just said, it is nice kind of seeing your town having its own resources. Whatever that may involve, you know, I know that it's not a overnight process, but I do think that if we all come together and figure out how to get a police force, I think it can be accomplished without outsourcing it to Shepherd County. Again, I don't have anything personally against Shepherd County. I know a lot of people that are on the force for Shepherd County, but as far as response time, as far as just feeling protected, when you're in a dire situation, an emergency situation, minutes matter. So when those minutes matter, whether it be from a response time from the police department, from an ambulance service, or whatever, you want them there as quick as possible. And being there as quick as possible is having our own police force. On top of that, growing up as a child and graduating from Vincent High School, there's a connection there for the kids. Because when you can have your kids not only see the police department in their faces, but yet, when we have something like Vincent in the park, or when they can go to our grocery store, or the post office, and when that police depart, police officer is off duty and they can see that same face in their own community, that creates a connection to that child. When they can see them in their own community, that creates to me, you know, a good feeling because then they can say, okay, he's a part of my community. Again, nothing against Shelby County, but if we have our own police department, because we're in Shelby County, we still have those resources that we can pull from if our police department has a situation that, that can't resolve by themselves. So I don't think outsourcing our police efforts to Shelby County is any more benefit than what we have with our own police department. Thank you.
Number thirteen, which is, last they call.
Hi. Council, mayor, thank y'all for letting the city come and discuss what's on their hearts. I think it's important for you to hear what everybody has to say. I've, I've been asked, like, over the last couple weeks, what my feelings were personally as far as whether I'm pro-Vinson police or pro-Shelby County. And I've not been able to give an answer because I think I can come up with positives of both and negatives of both. However, I feel like we are in a predicament where what's done is done. So if that's the case, then I don't think we have any option other than to hire Shelby County interim and go with that for now and compromise and rebuild if we can. I think that's about the only answer. We have to have coverage, we have families, we have children, there has to be somebody here now. I think rebuilding is a long process because I would like to think that we would go all the way back to the beginning and rebuild it in a positive direction. We have an opportunity as a city to move in a different direction. I think it's a turning point, or could be a turning point. So if rebuilding is what we choose to do, then I say that would be a good compromise. Keep Shelby County so that our families are protected, that we are protected, and work on rebuilding, take the time that it needs to find the right people to put in the positions. I mean, I personally don't know how many people are, you know, have been through training and are able to be police officers, maybe there's a bunch, maybe you'll get fifty applications today, I don't know. But at some point, you have to weed through all those, you have to, you know, rebuild. And I, I think, I think that's the best compromise that personally I can come up with. Shelby County comes in interim, try to rebuild. I think that kind of checks all the boxes for me. The other issue is the SRO officers. That's important. I don't, I don't know if anybody knows, but we had two SRO officers on the starting day of school this year. They were, there was one at the high school and one at the elementary school. That's never happened before, that was very important to me. I would like to know how that would be affected in either direction that we went. I think that's a concern. As far as community policing, I've always been a fan. I have one experience that I've shared a couple times over the last week where we had left our oldest daughter at home alone, she was maybe twelve, and a 911 call was made from our home. A local police officer, which is a good friend of mine, went to our home because he was dispatched, but he also called my husband. And he called him and said, "Hey, we got a 911 call, we're headed to your house." And my husband said, "Well, we don't have a phone line, so that's crazy." And two, our daughter's home alone. That officer went in my home, found my daughter, and called my husband and said, "I physically see her, and she's okay." That, to me, is community policing, and I think, I'm not trying to speak for everybody, but I think that's the kind of personal touch that people want to hang on to, is that they know our families and they know our friends. Now, that's not saying if two officers are dedicated to Vincent that we can't have that relationship with them either. I mean, anything is gonna have to be built. But I, I think the SRO situation is definitely important and something that should be at the top of the list for our kids. Thank you.
Number fourteen is Clarence Carter.
Good morning, city councilmen and women. I'm Clarence Carter, lived in this community all my life, and I don't have to tell you my age. But I don't believe you need to throw the baby out with the wash water. You need to keep the baby, change the water, because the baby still needs care, still needs nurture. And I just believe that we need to have a police department. Amen? I don't think three people is the only people that can be policemen. And I think if you can afford the ones we had, we may be able to get someone different in that same pay range. So I think it's to be considered. Everything has been said about the time and so forth. I think we need to have a police force because they've had to come to my area more than one time. But it was false alarm on the burglar, on the alarm system, and they were sent there. So if they got to come at a distance, then I think that would be a disadvantage. So I think you need to look at it. I know all, well, all the way you have to look at it. And if it's possible, we need to have a police force of our own. I don't have anything against Shelby County Sheriff, but they only stretched so far. And if they are thin in that area, then that means they're thinner in our area. And so, it would be good for you to consider having a force here in Vincent. Thank you.
Number five, Robson Garrett.
First of all, good evening. Thank the city council and the mayor for this opportunity to speak. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of one simple thing. I hear a lot of talk of people saying what the council can do, the council can't do anything. The council can make a recommendation to the mayor, and it's up to, to the mayor to enforce it if he chooses to. Several weeks ago, I was in the council meeting, and the council made a recommendation to the mayor to fire those officers that were involved, which means none of this would have got to this level if the mayor would have taken the recommendation of the council. So what I want to know is, why didn't the mayor take the recommendation of the council? And if you dissolved the police department, will any of this matter go into the officer's personnel file? That's all I got to ask, but thank you.
Deborah Coffey. Deborah Coffey.
Good afternoon, I'm Deborah Coffey. I've lived in this town for sixty-four years, and it really saddens me what has happened. But I don't see where doing away with our police department is gonna solve anything but make things worse. I just wanted to voice my opinion. I think we do need a police department. It needs to be reconstructed, but I don't want to see it done away with. A lot of times I have, or sometimes I have had to call for assistance, and the police was right here to help me. And I don't want to see that done away. was right here to help me, and I don't want to see that done away with. I mean, we have seen them in our schools, we've seen them at ball games, and up and down the road. That did give us comfort to know that our police department was there for us, that we didn't have to depend on Harpersville, we didn't have to depend on Shelby County, we were very independent. This move right here is making us dependent on someone else. We don't need that. We are a peaceful community. We used to be known as the sleepy town of Vincent. Like I said, I've lived here for 64 years, and I just do not see the need to do away with our police department.
My name is Charles Hamilton. Born and raised on Highway 62, known as the Riverloom. Like the two speakers, first two speakers said, this is home. I agree with that, this is home. I play football right here in Benson. This is home. I agree with Pastor Carter saying about, we need the police department. But must we go back 400 years? It's 2022. Must we go back there? Do we have to live those days over again? If I come up there and slap one of you off, I'm going to jail, right? Because of my consequences. Because I had a choice, right? Okay. When that text went out, they made a choice, and they got to suffer the consequences. That's all we saying. We not saying get rid of police, but get rid of the ones that's in charge, that did the texting. That's what we are saying. We're not saying get rid of police. I'm quite sure we got some auxiliary coming up. Keep out of police department, but get rid of the ones, the bad ones. Kind of like the first two speakers said, this is home. I agree what you all saying, but you not in our shoes. See, I understand what you all saying, but this is home, I agree with that. But you not black. And the joke was not on you. The joke was on us, being a black man in Vincent, Alabama. That's what we are addressing. Don't mean no harm to the council. We need you all, we need our police department, but we need you all to do the right thing. That's all we are, thank you.
Number 11 is Megan Poe.
I'm Megan Poe. I'm sorry, I did not come prepared with a big speech, but I do have questions and concerns. I've lived here in Chelsea, in, I'm sorry, I work in Chelsea, so I interact with a lot of the deputies that would be possibly working out here. I've lived here for 12 years. I've had to personally call an officer to our house before, and it took 30 minutes. I have concerns that an officer that was on the force for as long as he was, you're not going to convince me that that's, that's the first racist thing he said or texted. The fact that it, someone had to get it public before it was taken care of is a concern. I'm, I'm not pro police department or pro sheriff's department right now. I want questions answered, I want to be informed. I've seen that we have two SRO officers for the first time ever, and I want to know why that couldn't happen before. If we move forward either way, are we going to get to keep those two SRO officers? I think we can, well, if, if we have dedicated SRO, I mean, if we have dedicated sheriff's deputies, we can get to know them just like we got to know our local law enforcement. Whoever is hired, are there a lot of police officers in Vincent ready to, you know, apply? I'm doubtful. There's still going to be people from the outside that we're going to have to embrace. So those are some of my questions and concerns. Thank you.
That was it, do you want the mic? Well, we've had some that did not want the mic. Do you want the mic?
All right, y'all, y'all, I'm going to try to do my best to answer all the questions. And Council, if y'all have anything to add at any point, please step in. So the first question that I have written down was, have there been any complaints about the police department employees? Since I have been mayor, I got elected in November of, well, I took office in November of 2020, I believe. Since that time, I have had no official written complaints in regards to any employees at the police department. Next question is, when did we find, find out about the text and what was done? All right, as I believe Ms. Garrett pointed out, was, I think so, okay. Like I said, as Ms. Garrett pointed out, the text was sent sometime in June. Councilmember Abrams was the first person to bring it to me. Councilmember Samika then brought it to me a couple of weeks later. She, she had additional information, and the chief and I were waiting to talk to her before we proceeded with anything. After that, in about the middle of July, the officer in question was disciplined, and a disciplinary action was entered into his personnel file. Next question that Ms. Garrett had was, why was the chief allowed in the executive session? Chief was in the executive session to give his version, his account of events that led up to where we, where we stand now. It was, it was done in executive session because there have been accusations made against the chief, so the chief was given the opportunity to explain those accusations. Next question that Ms. Garrett had was, why was David Latimer allowed in the session? That's a good question, that's fair. So David, David Latimer is my father, yes. David Latimer is also the former chief of Harpersville, is graduate of the FBI National Academia. So I asked my father, as a very experienced police officer, to help me investigate the situation and find out what was going on. Yes, I can. All right, next question, next question from Ms. Reed. Did the council vote to fire the assistant chief, and the mayor saying no? Based on legal counsel from our city attorney, we are not able to fire Officer Goss for one write-up. Our city personnel policy requires two write-ups and a verbal warning before we can proceed with termination. That's what we said at the last, not Tuesday night, but the last special meeting that we had. Next question was, when will the letters to the Ethics Commission be sent? They will be sent Tuesday morning, they're going to be compiled from all members of the council and myself. We're going to compile them all into one packet and send to the Ethics Commission as one packet. We agreed to meet Tuesday morning, assemble those, not having a meeting, it's not a meeting, just simply to have those notarized and placed in an envelope and sent Tuesday morning. And we're going to do that all together, okay? Next question from Leslie Cobb. How would the SRO be handled if we kept the police department? That's a good question. The problem that we have always had in regards to the SRO is manpower and being able to pay for that manpower. We only had three officers. It, it's impractical to take two out of three officers and place them in the school. Then you don't have other officers to cover other things in the school.
Can I ask something?
Absolutely.
On the SRO thing, so I've spoken with Jennifer Coopra at the Shelby County Services, and we can dismiss ourselves contractually and move that portion of money back to the county commission and the order of education for them to pursue and work it, work it out contractually, so that we can keep the Shelby County SRO, and they'll be taken care of. So that's, that, that can be taken, taken care of.
All right, Ms. Levon Garrett, did I say that correctly? Okay. I was talking about the other, Ms. Garrett, just a minute ago, she had asked a question. Levon Garrett asked, why did I not fire the officer involved? As I stated a minute ago, based on our personnel policies and legal advice from our city attorney, we could not fire the officers. Because it would be in violation of our personnel policies, as I explained a minute ago. Megan, Megan Poe, Megan Poe asked, why did we not have two SROs before? Kind of already addressed this as well, that is a money and a manpower issue. We didn't have the money to have two dedicated officers in our school. Next question is, will we keep them if we keep the police department? I think Cory just answered that. I would say that is, that is essentially a yes, but they would not be a part of Vincent Police Department if it was the county.
But why didn't we do that before?
That's a good question, and I don't know the answer to it. Anybody want to add something? What's that? It is, but we are bound by personnel policies. Mr. Justice, would you like to explain that here, anybody?
The general rule in Alabama is that employment is at will, and either side can end the employment for any reason or no reason at any time. That rule can be changed or altered by personnel policies, by terms of a contract, by an ordinance, or by statute. In this case, it has been altered by an Alabama state law passed in 2001 by our legislature, which provided special rules for law enforcement personnel only, not other city employees. Law enforcement personnel are entitled to due process hearings based on personnel rules that have to be adopted by municipalities, applicable to law enforcement personnel. Vincent has adopted personnel policies. The provision in the personnel policy says termination can be done after one verbal warning and two reprimands are in the file of the employee. In this case, as far as I know, based on what I've been told, there were not two reprimands in the personnel files of the two employees. Plus, Vincent's ordinance establishing the police department and setting up the office of police chief states that the chief may be terminated for cause in accordance with the rules of the city of Vincent. There's the rules in personnel policy. The solution, of course, ongoing in the future is to change the terms of the personnel policy, where there's a requirement to reprimands to be in the file in order to terminate somebody. But that being in the policy as it is now, you cannot go back and change it. In my mind, doing the right thing is following the law and not surrendering the city to the possibility of paying out any damages to these people. Doing the right thing is following the law and the provisions that are in place.
Mayor Latimer, as you being an officer, a policeman yourself.
Yes, ma'am.
And you know, when you were sworn in, you had to take an oath. And in that oath, you, you promised to serve all people.
Absolutely.
Now, when you say all people, we're not just talking about whites. We're not talking about brown skin, we're not talking about yellow, we are talking about all people. Those that, nobody, when I came here in 1907, this was not my home. I came from Birmingham where the dogs was released and the highway was, you know, turned on, my house was bombed. But I never thought that I would be in Vincent, Alabama, to see the police department to walk that walk after they had said that we promised to uphold the law, to protect and serve all people. But one question that should be asking there, when you are making that oath, we are talking about racism right now, that as Brother Carter said, that's not something we should be doing. But here it is in 2022, standing here, there are some people white, they have a side of prejudice that we might not see. There's blacks, we have a side of prejudice that you may not see. But as I'm standing here in Vincent, we got black and whites go to church together, and we are serving the same Lord. But yet you're going to get up behind my back when you with your white friends, and you're going to say something about the black person or the yellow person. And I'm looking at you saying that we have 85% white, 12% black, but we left out the other percent. We are all people here in this community. I would love to say, when I first came here, I knew Chief Humphrey, I knew Chief Butler, I knew Lee Strickland, and I would love to be able to call on the police in Vincent that I know by name. But when I know that person by name and he can say, what do you call a pregnant woman behind my back? You're talking about, you're from Birmingham now, you look at that black history, the pregnant women that you see out there is black. You don't see a Jew, you don't see a white. So I have to stand here today, don't stand and support me because we white, support me because we are all people. We are all one color. But I be there, we be the same color. This is not Mayberry anymore, this is Vincent. And all of us, every color in here, should be standing for what was said, not to be demolished to get rid of the police department, but get rid of the people that can't serve all people. Because we as blacks have seen too many black-on-black crimes by the white police, while the black police was standing there and allowing to keep their God. It's time out of that. It's time for all God's people to come together. Don't talk to me in church and praise God on Sunday, but then at Sunday night you with your white friends calling me a nigger. I don't want that. I want to see your sister and brother in Christ, and the same police that walk these streets should respect us, all people of color as people. And that's what we need from Vincent, Alabama. I don't care if it's Shelby County, maybe someone from Shelby County won't come to Vincent, same time. same God, our officer here, we have a nigger, like God for them. Shelby County arrests just like Vincent. What difference does it make? But what it makes is that it's a personal thing.
Yes, ma'am.
And when those two did that, it hurt to the heart. It hurt. And only way you know it hurts, you got to walk in some of our shoes. That's the only way you know it.
Yes, ma'am.
And you don't have to be black or white to hurt.
That's right.
You don't have to be.
What's your name, ma'am?
Yamada Kelly.
Yamada Kelly, thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One quick question, because I know people getting ready to go home. My name is Bobby J. Pearson, I'm the vice president of Shelby County, D and AACP. My question is, I'm good, I'm good, I got a teacher's voice, I'm trying to educate. My question is, you was talking about you couldn't fire an individual until they had a couple of reprimands, write-ups, and all this stuff. If I was one of your police officers, okay, and I had nothing in my file, okay, and I came up to you and cold cocked you and slapped you, should you fire me then?
I couldn't. And listen, 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 this, I completely understand your frustration, I do. This has uncovered a flaw that not a single person at this table realized we have with our personnel policies. And that's a fair criticism.
Okay, well.
And it will be addressed, I can promise.
I understand, you know, thank you, sir. Like I said in one of your previous meetings, bottom line is, things that doesn't seem fair, it doesn't mean that they're not legal. Thank you.
Yes.
Y'all have a good night.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, can I just one question directly?
You can, yes, ma'am.
Now, since there are no write-ups in there for COVID, so is there a chance?
I didn't say there were none.
Okay, at this point, there was none. Is there a chance that these officers can be still and keep employment in this police?
Well, that's a. Listen, y'all, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you straight up, okay? I know this, and that's what I'm doing, okay? Part of this banning the police department solves that problem. Now, there's a lot of misinformation out there about that, and y'all feel free to jump in at any time, okay? At no point has it, well, at least from my perspective, I can only speak for myself, at no point has it ever been intended as a permanent solution, okay? We can bring the police department back. We can go with Shelby County for a year and then bring the police department back once we've had time to interview people, to find the right people to fill positions. And y'all, right now, it's hard to find good police officers, especially in a city like Vincent where we don't pay that much. And that's, that's just the truth of the matter, okay? So whether or not we decide, whether or not we vote tonight to go with Shelby County, it's not the end of, it's not the end of Vincent Police Department. There is still that opportunity to bring Vincent Police Department back. And that's been part of the conversation that we have had, is do we need time to rebuild Vincent Police Department, or do we want to go with the county? And that's why we had this public forum, because we, I gotta get this thing away from me, y'all, I'm sorry. That's why we had this public forum, because we want to hear from y'all and know what y'all want us to do. Because y'all, we answer to y'all.
That's right. We just fit right.
That's right. And it's, we're the ones that make the decision, but that decision is based on what you tell us, okay? And that's, that's, that's the purpose of tonight. So I just want to make that clear, that even if we do vote to disband the police department tonight, that doesn't mean that it's gone completely. And I'll, I'll be honest with you, I don't know that, you know, in the next 30 days, we'd be able to rebuild and do a good job of it. That's my concern.
Right. No, you do not.
Yes, ma'am, I agree.
Because you have to interview, you have to check characters, you have to check records, you have to check background. So for the meantime, this is not the first time that this has been put on the floor about bringing in Shelby County and demolishes the Vincent Police Department. This is not the first time.
I know it's not.
And I know you all have looked at this, but as for me and my household, I can't speak for anybody else, until someone is interviewed, I would say that Shelby County, this is me, carry on. And they are always in this area.
That's really the only option.
I heard people say it takes 30 to 45 minutes, but sometimes it took Vincent, they were there, Jack, 30 minutes, you know? So that's what it is. You know, I'm not just sitting here lying, making it look good, I'm going to tell you what, that's what it is. So sometimes it took 30 minutes, and they just come from Hockensville on lunch breaks, so, okay? And I've been told I had to wait by one of, someone at the city hall, so it's all right. But I believe for the people of Vincent, that as of now, until you are ready to inquire into hiring, not just anyone, anybody.
Yep.
It needs to be researched, it needs to be followed through, and allow Shelby County to conquer, and not stop so many cars giving 30,000 tickets in one day. Because I've seen that on the first day, three cars would stop in one day.
Sorry, that's not, that's not doing.
You know, but we do need, we do need a police department, and we do need protection.
Yes, ma'am.
But we don't need anybody. We need someone that swore and meant what they said when they sworn in, to protect all people.
Yes, ma'am.
He has to contract with Shelby County. And what does that mean?
So.
We have not contracted with them.
Excuse me?
Right.
It means something different.
Okay. So, Councilmember Wood, yes, ma'am, give me just a minute, okay? Let me explain what Councilmember Wood wanted me to explain, okay? So, he was wanting me to explain the process of how a contract with Shelby County works. And ma'am, just by the way, Mr. Pearson still wanted to say something, so I'm happy to finish, I'm going to let him say something too, okay? So, if we were to contract a deputy with Shelby County, like we said, the price is roughly $95,000 per deputy, and that's for a 40-hour shift, okay? We can, we can contract as many as we want or as many as we can afford, okay? What that would mean is, on a per-deputy basis, we would have a deputy dedicated to Vincent, patrolling in Vincent for 40 hours per week, okay? If we have multiple deputies, that would stack, of course. Outside of those 40 hours that that individual deputy works, the county will still provide services, it'll just be the East Car, which serves Calis, Sterit, Vandiver. They would also be covering, they may not be patrolling specifically in Vincent, but they're in the area and they're answering cops, okay? So we still have 24-hour police coverage, that's not, it doesn't mean that we're just going to have one police, one deputy that works 40 hours a week and then we have nothing otherwise. So we'll still have those services in the meantime, right? Does that kind of explain what you want me to explain there?
Yes, but tell them what comes with that 95,000 extra.
You're talking about like drug task force, backup, something like that? Okay, so, right now with, or previously having our own police department, we do all of our own investigations. Now, things do get turned over to the county for prosecution on the felony level, but having the county come in, you also have all the benefits of the specialized units and everything that the county has. So it's not just having that patrol deputy, it's also having the drug task force, the special victims, I don't know if they have an SBU per se, but special crimes, things like that. So there are other benefits that come with that, and Shelby County has resources that Vincent has never had. Now, it is a fair criticism to say that Shelby County is always willing to come and help them. So it's not, it's not as, it's not, we don't have it if we do this, or we do have it if we don't do this. There is a little bit of gray area involved, but there are a lot of benefits to going with the county and a lot of resources that would be made available to us from the county that we don't have ourselves. That kind of cover what you want?
Yeah.
So that $95,000 too, that includes everything. That includes all that deputy's equipment, vehicle, fuel cost, everything. That means the city's not paying any additional money other than that $95,000 for that deputy. So it is a fixed price, and y'all all know what fuel's done up the past year. That, that kind of blew up our budget for the police department too. And doing this, it allows us to know exactly what we were spending, so that is another benefit too.
And as long as crime is committed to 27 and 3, will they fine?
What's that?
As long as crime is committed to 27 and 3, will they fine?
Well, like I said.
40 hours a week.
Like, like I said, Mr. Crowder, no, we still have coverage 24 hours.
I waited 45 minutes on one night to come to my house when my niece was there, drugged up, trying to drag her daughter out of my house.
And, and to be fair, with only having three full-time Vincent officers, there are times when one of them has to wake up, and it takes 30 minutes for them to respond. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but we still have that problem if we only have three police officers, at least to an extent.
Yes.
So that, it's, they kind of weigh out on that specific. Mr. Pearson, I'm sorry to keep you waiting.
It's okay. Now, if we do decide to go with the police department, that means there's got to be some people that's got to be interviewed.
Yes, sir.
So who would be doing the interviewing?
So.
What I'm thinking, maybe that some citizens, I know we got planning board to the council, maybe we need to come up with a citizen review board that we need to, to interview any officer if we decide to go to put on a police officer, it needs to go through citizen review board, then.
So basically, you want a civil service board?
Citizen review board. I don't want that to go off.
That's a civil service board.
Yeah, because we, I think that each, this needs a person from the district now, because it's too.
Yeah, I'm going to cut things off. Keep going, Mr. Pearson, I'm going to cut.
Again, I think that citizens from this county, I mean, from this city, we need at least one citizen from each district. Like we have the city council from each district, we have people on the planning board from each district. Now, we might need to look at getting a, getting people qualified, trained to be citizen review board people, just so they can start doing some interviewing, and then we take it, they take from what we got, I mean, I say we, the citizen review board, take it from there to the council entity.
I'll be honest with you, Mr. Pearson, I have no idea how that would work. Here's, here's what we do right now. We have a personnel committee. That personnel committee consists of myself, it consists of Cory Abrams and Leslie Cobb, who is a private citizen. She's assigned on that personnel committee, okay? So I know that's not exactly what you're saying, but it is kind of simple, but any hiring and firing, well, not firing, sorry, any hiring of positions goes through that personnel board. That personnel board that I am a part of makes a recommendation to me, and then I present that to the council in the case of, like, the chief. So that's, that's the process that we go through right now, okay?
My thing is, do we need to change that? Do we need to change that? Get Trico come out here in this crowd first, interview, then you guys do an interview.
Like I said.
I don't know, someone might need to look into.
I don't, that would probably be a question for Mr. Justice, because he can answer better than I do, so.
But have you considered maybe trying to, you know, to burn and rebuild? Because this ain't it. This not going to work. You have to start from the bottom and work all the way up to the top.
Yes, sir. Hold on, can I let this lady over here ask a question, please? I'm sorry, ma'am, go ahead.
Yes, I have a question. You keep saying about rebuilding the police or not rebuilding the police, but I look at the police department, they don't represent everybody. Right now, it seems like Vincent is all family, or it's a family group. There's no majority of people. Most of the people that work in Vincent, it's the man. So we need to start all over from there too, because if my mother worked in here, Dad worked up in here, so I sit down, you're not representing me.
We don't, we don't have any employees.
Can I, can I be?
Yes, go ahead.
Because all I see is, I ask someone, literally stop me asking you to be in a black room in this, because they came through and everything is grandma. There's no white policeman. And they got to be playful. Get the people out of there. Don't hide nobody from this. That's how it's not.
Oh, so you don't want to hide from them?
People in this, it's related to somebody, and then this person will get to the car because they been friend with this. This is my mother's part, if it related, it's grandmother or something. Get the cops out of there. Make sure they got real training, not just say, oh, I got no source of them. Let them clearly, really go to police academy. Not no freaking thing of test.
So, are you done?
A real police academy.
Okay, so, anybody that serves as a police officer anywhere in the state of Alabama has to go through an APOST-approved academy, which APOST is Alabama County.
No, no, no.
Is it?
Well, why do one cop get stopped, stopped and ask for his badge? I don't have no badge. If you're a real cop, why you ain't got no badge? You ain't got no badge, cop. So you can't go to academy, right?
What?
So he didn't go to a police academy, right? So every cop stopped my sister three times, asked for a badge.
No, but they don't have a badge.
I understand that need.
So they're cops then, right?
No, that's not true. Not every department uses badge numbers, okay?
Every cop has a badge.
No, they do not. They don't. Badge numbers, badge numbers is going to depend, y'all, this is, look, I don't mind explaining this, but it's kind of irrelevant for the conversation, but I do want to ask you a question, okay? Not every department uses badge numbers, okay? They may have an employee number, but that's not a badge number, those are not the same things, okay? An APOST-certified officer, any police officer in the state that is working as a police officer has to go through an APOST-approved academy, okay? There's several academies in the state, and they have to graduate from that academy before they can work as a police officer and have power of arrest, okay?
So how can somebody have a record and still be a police? You can't steal it, tell them you're arrested.
That, that would be a good question for APOST. I angle that way. And look, the people at APOST are not perfect. There's bad people that slip into law enforcement all the time. We, we, we in law enforcement try our best to make sure that that doesn't happen, but we're not perfect either. And we make mistakes.
The police department doesn't represent everybody. Now, just one race.
Okay, okay. Okay, let me, let me finish up with her real quick. Ma'am, like I said, we're kind of getting sidetracked, but I do, I appreciate your question. What was the last part of your question?
I said, make sure it represents everybody. I just want to set a race.
That's fair.
Black is a middle of women too, on this court.
It's hard, it's hard to find women in the police. I, I, I agree. I gave.
I'd like to call Bridget, Bridget Jordan Smith. Bridget, I have something I'd like to read out of the handbook for counselors, for mayors and council members, and what I would like to ask you to do is to scrutinize what I say and help me interpret what I say and see if it's correct or not. And I'm relying on you because of your expertise and understanding of this and your involvement in reading this book. Is that acceptable with you? Yes? Okay, I'm reading something, and I am replying a lot to, I believe it was Lois Garrett's comments earlier today about. about who police officers from the city of Vincent report to, who hires, who fires, who has that authority. And I'm paraphrasing a little bit, but I'm trying to address who has the authority so that y'all understand. Because I think there is a plus and a minus to that authority and how it affects whether or not having a police department within a municipality is the best way to handle it. So here's what I'm going to read. The council may not adopt any ordinance or resolution requiring the mayor to give written instructions and orders to employees and officers of the municipality, nor may the council require employees and department heads of the municipality to answer directly to the council for their actions and receive their instructions in whole or part directly from the council. What that means is that the council cannot tell the mayor to fire someone, you can only advise him to do so. You cannot tell the mayor, you must hire this young man or that young man. It's strictly up to him to do the final hire, him and the police chief, if there is one, to do the hiring and the firing. The personnel committee may have input into it, but again, it's the mayor, and he has that sole authority under statute. Is that correct, based on your understanding, Bridget?
Yeah, in your time, we'll be able to answer that with that.
I'm sorry?
Because in your time, we'll be able to answer that question even better.
Okay.
The police chief hiring rule is the responsibility of the council. By statute, and by the city ordinance, provides that the council-
Look it loud, please. Look it loud.
The police chief hiring is done by the council. That's the council's job, is to hire the police chief. The, I was not familiar with Vincent's setup, as far as having the personnel committee, with that type of setup, then the police officers would be hired by the mayor, rather than department officers.
Okay, so what I said was correct, if we, the majority of us wanna keep our police department, but tonight, if that would happen, it would be up to one man as to who he hired.
For the officer, but not for the chief. The chief is hired by the council.
We don't have a chief right now, so now we got a man. So it would be up to him.
Under state law, to hire the officer, yes, but, but, let me answer the question, okay? Under state law, yes, I would have the authority to do that. I don't choose to do that. I choose to use the personnel committee, which, like I said, consists of two other people. One council member and one, one member of the public on the personnel committee. So I don't make that decision on my own. It is, but that's what I'm saying. I choose not to do that on my own, okay? Cory, Cory can attest to that. Cory's been a part of several interviews where we've hired for different positions. Not police officer, no, not yet, because at the time, we haven't had any openings for police officers. But, well, I can appreciate that.
The way you're saying this, y'all got, you and the council got to like, hire some, right? But y'all ain't got the power, right, nobody, y'all gotta go to the law.
So, like I said earlier, all of this has uncovered a problem with our personnel policy, our personnel policy. We all know that, and I don't think anybody here would say that we were aware of this being a problem with our personnel policies prior to this happening. So, that being said, I can't do it by myself, it takes assistance from the council. But I feel very confident that the council is on board with fixing our personnel policies so that we don't run into this again.
So this is the first time, this come up, I found, it's the first time y'all had this problem, I found, I mean, come up.
Yeah.
All these years, the first time you come up.
I can't speak to what happened to prior counties, I don't know. But it's the first time we've had this issue, yes.
And then, these officers could not, so how long will they be on administrative leave and drawing our tax payers?
So, that kinda depends on the outcome of this meeting, okay? If we, if we vote to disband the police department, and like I said earlier, that could be a temporary thing, okay? That could be until we have the opportunity to interview and find good applicants, okay? We disband the police department tonight, those employees become laid off, they're no longer employed at that point, okay? They're already seeking their retirement, which is a benefit that they have earned because they have served the required number of years to get their retirement, okay? So, if we choose tonight to disband the police department, they will no longer be drawing any pay from the city. What does that affect them? Hold on, one minute, I got a little bit to add to that.
If the ordinance is adopted tonight, and posted tomorrow, five days after the posting, it goes into-
But can the council make the post, or can you make the chief?
So, we've already answered that question, based on our personnel policies, we cannot terminate it.
Mayor, quick question. So, obviously, I know that most people agree that the employees that did what they did should not work for the city. I understand with statutes, we can't make that happen. My question is, if y'all vote to disband the police department tonight, they become laid off employees, correct?
That's correct.
At that point, if y'all reinstate the police department, let's say we disband tonight, y'all reinstate Monday morning, do those laid off employees have to go back through the interview process? Or do they get to come back as laid off employees?
If we-
What's the timeframe to, because clearly, I think, I think everybody agrees, we need to change the personnel policy.
That's a really good way.
Hundred percent, we need to change that. But if, if they get laid off, because I know if I get laid off from my job, that there's a certain, I have a certain time limit, that if they reposition that job, I go back to it.
So-
What does that look like?
Like I said, both of the employees in question are already at the number of years required.
Right, no, I understand that.
I know, I'm just-
I'm talking about in general, what's the, what's the, what's the process?
I know, and that's what I'm gonna lay out for you, okay?
Okay.
They've already turned in their paperwork for retirement, okay? So, as of five days after posting this ordinance, like Mr. Justice just said, they would be laid off. We're not gonna be able to find and retain good quality people in the next thirty days.
No, I understand.
I know, I know you do, but just let me get through the whole thing, okay? So, what, what we have kind of, or what I, my idea of the right way to approach this is to contract with the county for probably a year, okay? And that gives us ample time to go through, by that point, their retirements are official, they're gone through, they're no longer, they're no longer employees, they're no longer able to come back from being laid off.
They are no longer able to come back.
Right, right. So, I think, my personal opinion, now, I hear what all of you are saying, and not a single person here says, we won't go with Shelby County. And I respect that, I don't wanna go with Shelby County. I never wanted to get rid of the police department. That's one of the things that I, I love. Now, not, that's not a defense of any individual, but I want Vincent to have its own police department. And that, I don't, I don't think anybody can question that. But, given the circumstances and the difficulty, right now, there's a shortage of police officers in this country, y'all. So it is tough to find good quality candidates, especially with what Vincent has to offer, pay wise. So it's gonna take a good bit of time to go through that process and find people. So the short answer to your question, sir, is, no, they would not be able to come back off of being laid off.
All right, ma'am, I have a couple of questions. How much are we trying to pay Shelby County?
So, we've already-
I'm saying, I got here a little late because, because what I'm saying is, I would, I would rather, if it were possible, that you would collaborate with Mayor Perkins in Harpersfield.
So we can't do that.
We can't do that?
No. No, for Shelby County to be able to offer law enforcement services to other municipalities, it took a constitutional amendment to the constitution of Alabama, okay? So another law, another law enforcement agency can't just come in and take over for Vincent. Does that answer your question?
Mayor, thank you so much for explaining this, thank the city council people for explaining this to us, what's legal and what you can and cannot do. And I think we do want Vincent to eventually have their own department, but it does take time with everything. We appreciate you explaining that to us.
Yes, ma'am.
And as far as the sheriffs, who have come up here, the deputies, we can get to know them. I live near Vincent Alvarez School. There was a SRO over there parked at the church. I went up there and pulled up beside him, introduced myself, told him where I live, and he told who he was, and I welcomed him to commit, to the community. We can do this if we want to, for a short bit of time, to give you guys the ample opportunity to do what you need to do. So thank you.
Was there somebody over here that had a question? Yes, sir.
Officer Logon of ISUPK, University of North Carolina. And we was invited here by the people of the community to support this situation. And what we here to address is, we can't get over the fact that this is institutional racism going on with this. We can't get over the fact that this was just a joke. We can't just overlook that and move on. What we wanna know is, are the officer's previous arrests getting investigated? Because what's going on, a lot of times, when people have this racism going on, they have arrested somebody years ago, and they didn't, they didn't need to be in jail. And the fines that were paid, that needs to go back and be investigated.
I'm gonna go ahead and stop you, okay? I appreciate you being here, first of all, okay? So, you not being from Vincent, you may not be aware of what others, others have seen at the council meetings that they've been to, okay? So, we have all agreed to turn over an ethics complaint to the Ethics Commission.
Right.
And like I said a little bit earlier, and I don't know if y'all were in here yet.
We probably were, we were a little late.
Okay, and that's fine. I don't know, like I said, I don't know if you're in here, but Tuesday morning, we're gonna assemble, each of us is gonna fill out an ethics complaint, and turn that into the Alabama Ethics Commission, okay? What, what happens with it from that point, I don't know.
And what we also wanna know is, when the officers retire, are they gonna be allowed to go to another city? Because most times, when this happens, they can retire and go to another city.
That's something else that I've addressed in a previous council meeting, okay? And I'll fill you in the quick version of it, okay?
Okay.
Once, so there was, there's a new law in Alabama, I think it was passed the year before last, I can't remember the name of it, but basically what that law states is that any police department that hires a police officer that comes from another department is required to contact that department that they came from and get a copy of their personnel file, okay? The department that that officer came from is required to supply that. Now, previous to this law, that wasn't the case, and what you're saying did happen once. That law was passed to prevent that kind of thing, okay? So, like I said a little while ago, a disciplinary action has been entered into the officer that sent that text message, into his personnel file. I can't promise what another police department would do, but that information would be released to them. They would be aware of that information before making a hiring decision. So if they were to choose to hire, it would be on them.
Okay, one more, now, what provisions are being made to make sure the people are speaking for themselves, do not have to worry about retaliation later on?
Like I said, I'll, okay, that's another, again, that's another thing that we've already covered.
Okay.
At not our last regular council meeting, but at our last special meeting, we suspended all police department operations, okay? Shelby County is covering police department operations for the city of Vincent, until such time as we make a decision on how we're gonna move forward. So that, so no officer from Vincent Police Department, no, no citizen has to worry about a Vincent police officer harassing them at this point, because they're not working. All operations have been suspended.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, ma'am?
It does, you got something?
Yes, sir.
You got something?
Isn't it time to vote?
I, I, I agree, and I have let y'all, I have, I've tried to let y'all say your piece, and even though you might not have signed up, I think it's fair for y'all to have the opportunity to answer your question. Does anybody else have anything, really, before we move on to council discussion?
Two more hours to respond. Two more hours.
Jeremy Young has got one thing, I'm gonna let him.
Just want to, yeah, for my clarification and maybe for somebody else. If the police department is voted not to dissolve tonight, what is the, I actually have to, if it's not, if it's voted not to dissolve tonight, what opportunities does that give those two police officers?
That's a good question, Jeremy. And I don't, to be honest, we've had to figure out exactly what that means, if we don't. Well, look, look, the truth is, we're not gonna let them come back far, either way this plays out, okay? I can't fire them, but at the same time, we'll keep operations suspended until they're fired. What's that? It's not firing them, it's laying them off.
Whatever, every time you wanna work, that solves the problem, I think. You dissolve, you fire the police department, and we come back and fix this, like it needs to be fixed.
All good questions.
Our next question is, what is the dissolve, which I believe, what is the process of, basically, termination, bringing back a police force to the city council?
All right, go ahead, I'm gonna go ahead and, guys, if y'all would, kind of refrain from questioning, we're gonna go ahead and open the floor for council questions right now, okay?
I'm not sure if I'm supposed to do this now or after, but I'm making a motion for a change in the ordinance as it reads, because an ordinance, in its nature, is permanent. So I'm making a motion that it reads at the top, an ordinance abolishing the police department. I make a motion that we change it to temporarily, temporarily doesn't mean one month. It can mean up to a year. But what it does is, it puts the pressure back on us. So we have to, number one, establish accountability. That accountability is hiring a consultant or consulting firm to do the job for us. And that takes out some of, some of the wishy-washiness, if you will, for lack of a better word. Number two, if, um-
Court, can I stop one second? Can we get an opinion on that from Mr. Justice?
Absolutely, I have enough energy to chat.
That can be done, okay?
Yeah, yes, I read it before we came. So, so we can establish that, so we wanna build the department, and it gives us time to reconstruct the personnel policies, to build from the ground up. That's why I would like to see that temporarily. We've heard what you said, and I, my personal opinion, I think we need our department, but that's up to you. I'm a voice of the people in District Five. So, long story short, I make a motion that we change the wording from an ordinance abolishing, which I think ordinance means permanent in nature, temporarily abolishing. Give us that time. And then, if we not mean your time, your timeframe, you guys, as citizens, put your pressure back on your individual councilmen, councilwomen.
Should we have a motion?
No, I said a motion.
We have to have a motion. You're suggesting an amendment? We have, we have to have the motion.
Okay, okay, well, after the reading, I'll-
But before, before we get to that, can I make a suggestion? And y'all tell me what y'all think of it. Should we put a timeframe on it? I think we should put, so the way, the way the contract with the county would work is it would start in October and run till the end of the following September, if we chose to do so. So, my suggestion for an appropriate timeframe is prior to October first, or that'd be twenty-three. Does that sound reasonable to everybody? I mean, Cory, it's your, it's your motion, you think that's sensible?
No, I'm saying temporarily doesn't mean, it doesn't have a timeframe. Temporarily can be a month, it can be a year, whatever time we need to properly build the department, is all I'm saying. So, that's temporarily. Like, give us time we need to build this thing from the ground up.
Okay, so you wanna leave it up to me now?
Yeah, temporarily, a year. I mean, we can say a year, the contractually, we're obligated to a year, if we go with Shelby County, they can come in and just, the prices are too high, so that gives us that option as well.
Okay, okay. All right, so.
I make the motion that we, or, you want to read it first? Yeah, read it first.
And then we'll make that motion for you, ma'am. Yeah. All right, all right, guys, I'm gonna read this ordinance so everybody can hear it, okay? Basically, the conversation we just had is after we read it, there's gonna be a small change to it, okay? So take that for what it is. All right, ordinance number 2022-08-18, an ordinance abolishing the police department. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Vincent, Alabama as follows. Section one, the police department for the city of Vincent, Alabama is hereby abolished as of the effective date of this ordinance, and the mayor is directed to contact the Shelby County Sheriff's Department to arrange for law enforcement services for the city. A proposed contract for law enforcement services is to be presented to the city council for approval. Section two, ordinance numbers 094-002 and 096-003, and any amendments thereto are hereby repealed. Section three, the ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication or posting as required by law. Now, Cory, do you want to make?
Yes.
Can I ask for an order?
Sure.
Attorney. Uh, do we need, do we need a motion to adopt this ordinance? We will.
Yes, you can move to adopt it and then during the discussion, read it on the, after that motion is seconded, then you can oppose the amendment.
Well, I think he's talking about suspending the rule to adopt.
No, no, no. We need, uh, you gotta do the suspension of the rules first before the, then make the motion to adopt, if you're in discussion.
Okay, so now we need a motion to suspend the rules. Okay, do I hear said, said motion? Who make the motion? All right, all right, um, let's do the roll call vote. Gary?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Tameka?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, all right, motion, Gary, to suspend the rules.
I move that we, uh, adopt the ordinance number 2022-08-18.
Okay, now Cory can make his. So we have to have a second question? Okay, I'll second. All right, now Cory, you can make your motion.
I make the motion that we amend ordinance number 2022-8-18 that reads, "An ordinance temporarily abolishing the police department." That first line, not just because we can put it to note. An ordinance in nature is deemed as permanent, so we would temporarily.
Cory, are you saying temporarily?
Yes, temporarily.
As the rule, as law of rule, don't you have to do the addition to add that in there when we put temporary, if it's not newly ordered for the law to read? Y'all have to.
Can you read that?
Y'all want me to read, read that?
The top line? So, the, the top line? So it's, uh, a motion.
Section one.
Section one, the police department for Vincent, the city of Vincent, Alabama is hereby abolished as effective date of this ordinance. The mayor is directed to contact the Shelby County Sheriff's Department to arrange for law enforcement services for the city. Proposed contract for law enforcement services is to be presented to the city council for approval.
So you're, you're putting temporarily in title?
Yes, temporarily in the title, but effectively.
It, it should be in section one too, though.
Yeah, yeah, but if we put it in the title, that therefore constructs the framework of this document, so it temporarily means it's in the document itself throughout, correct?
I, I, I just think for clarity.
Okay, we can put it, we can put it all through there.
All right, are we all on the same page? Understand what that meant? Do you have something? Oh, okay. Um, all right, voting on the amendment, Gary?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Tameka?
Yes.
Ralph?
And myself, yes.
Voting unanimous to make that amendment to second ordinance. All right. Any other discussion on the ordinance as amended? Are we ready to proceed with the vote? Gary?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Tameka?
Cory?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Voting is unanimous to pass ordinance number 2022-08-18 as amended. Do we have any other business?
I just want to say thank you to everyone, okay? You are, you are being heard and we want you at council meetings. Anybody who says otherwise is wrong, we welcome all of you to the council.